Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Let's go.
You see the sheet around the corner?
Yes, I did. The public comment sheet, excuse me. Okay. Does anybody have public comment this morning? No?
Nobody?
Sheet is there, but nobody.
Okay, item two, no one which makes further comments? You want to item three, certificate of completion, Tom Dubnyk? You finally finished them?
Yes.
Name my six, your name, Judge, I made it, day sixty.
He was very good, Judge.
PPE credit hours, documentation form, CACA area training, Hammuril, Texas, Potter County. Tom Dubnyk? Receive educational program, various things from overview of the power of duties of the county auditor, intended defense commission, understanding budget process, Affordable Care Act, Texas Juvenile, Justice Department accounting and reporting. County energy, transportation, reinvestment zones, chapter fifty-nine reporting. And I don't know about this day two process here. Course number zero-three-zero-one-nine, give them the pickle. Audit of trust funds and in article five, Texas Constitution, Commissioner's Court Authority, GATB sixty-eight and others announcement, legislative update, court cost fees from the legislative session, and roles and responsibility of the county. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Extinction activity, we'll hear from that one?
Yes, I can give them all after.
I'm gonna skip item five right now. Are you finished reading that already? Did it look all right like this? Okay. We'll go to item five, public hearing courthouse annex one, two, three, updates, comments, and questions. Anyone have it?
Yes, sir.
Status of the of the Starbuck's courthouse.
I think he might shed some light on that right now. That's the here to address some of those things anyway. Want to finish this?
Point. Um, it's some good news for Monday morning. So we approved the master plan that we've been working this time thing over the last month. It's all been approved by the Texas Starbuck Commission. So, um, in the master plan we've worked, been working on, but been required to obtain any of the emergency state fund money. So, uh, we're just wrapping up the grant application, which we've been working on for the last week. Basically following up with the paperwork that's needed. Man, if my office will be coming down today, they'll have to take their grabs and signatures. Our office met with the city manager, I believe, last week. And he's interested us also, so he's in support and we're getting some from him as well. So we can then scan everything and get that at the last step. So, um, we should be here in there by April, mid-April, um, the first or second of April, um, the notice. But more than we've been told, it looks very good, that I think it's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the what this, what this is being. I think it's been worth it. The sort of torture that's been, it's been worth it.
So, remind me again of the timing, if we get the grant?
Yes.
Um, we'll be able to start work on the foundation when, is that April?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as they gives. We would request to see whether we could actually start earlier. We can start working out with a construction company, but, um, you have to wait until the money's been apportioned before we can actually, we can't do retroactive. So, um, we've had a lot of conversations back and forth with Texas Starbuck Commission. So we're looking at, there's sort of, it's between the first and second week of, week of, uh, April is when they'll be notified, the final review. So, but we've done through that process, going through the, uh, the actual approval of the master plan. There was some other supplemental information we had, but that's all been provided. So, we're just waiting, it's just waiting on the end now. I met with, uh, the Kira Company last week, they provided the bits that were within budget for the courthouse. Uh, we've not done anything before last. And so we're keeping an eye on the loop of when we're anticipating on starting and their final review. Um, so it'd be, we're, we're, this is the same, it's how it can wait right now on, on, on the state.
What about the, uh, the Justice Center, the courtroom? How soon will we be able to start the demolition of, for lack of a better word, the internal work that has to be done?
Part of our meeting, one of our meetings that we followed us was to look at, um, on the regional sort of bid estimates they're giving us, we need to look at realigning a few things. They have a confusion on a couple, one or two issues. So we, they're actually repricing right now, um, to get current pricing for what we have. And we looked at the scope of work to it, so we spent a good couple about a week. So I'm hoping that we should be getting, you know, bids these days aren't good for thirty days anyway. So we, they need to go back and re-bid anyway. Um, I think that we're, we're closer than, you know, we're, we're closer than we initially thought. So we're just gonna keep pounding at it to see where we can be, just look at the scope of work that we want, and then see what we come up. So they probably got, I'd say another couple of weeks before we get revising those on that.
So are we, are you, we're saying that in March we'll start doing work?
I'd like to almost be, I'd like to, if that's the case, I'd like to be looking at coming in at more or less the same time, to be starting at the same time. Ideally, obviously, I would, if you get, the most efficient way would be to start at the same time. Because obviously we want to get courthouse stabilized and move over there as soon as we can, so we can get the folks out of here, then we can start looking at ending up on the library.
And what do you foresee as the completion date? And I know this is all very nebulous, but, um, when do you foresee being able to move into the court, the old courthouse? And when do you see the Justice Center being finished? I know the library has to follow, but from the standpoint of the Justice Center and the courthouse, what kind of range of time?
For the last conversation I had with, with the Kira Company for the courthouse, I think we were looking at sort of the new year to get that wrapped up.
So maybe the end of this year?
I'm hoping if we get, if everything goes well.
First quarter of next year?
Yeah. If everything goes well, we can then start looking at moving back, occupying to there. The key is going to be, obviously stabilize the foundation and how long the engineer and the actual concrete subcontractor's gonna say it needs to settle before we then start messing with the exterior. But apart from the one corner, which is, you know, needs to be replaced, that entire wall for the most part, as soon as that's done, I'd really like to start going into the interior and then, you know, the actual layers of paint and change what we need to do. And I'd like to do that, sort of in sequence with the exterior work, so that we don't lose any time at all. But obviously I want it, it needs to be dried and settled sufficient enough that then we mitigate any future cracking in terms of interior. By that, I'm talking about interior sheetrock or plasterwork. So it's that journey and game of making sure it's settled and dry in time that we can then start working on the interior finishing.
I'm sorry I'm asking all these questions, Judge. The, I know that part of the plan is, not, yeah, part of the plan is obviously we're gonna vacate here.
Yes.
Then you're gonna get the library. Wasn't situated here.
That's what someone asked the other day. And I told him, this is what I had in mind on that, and correct me, you can run the courthouse and the criminal deal concurrently.
Yes.
And, uh, once the courthouse is ready, we move in, but Jan will have to, the remainder of the area is the office in park that she's in. And, uh, until the library is completed, Ms. Eva can move into the old library, and then that.
If you answered my question, you could tell where I was headed, because that, I know part of what we were gonna do is take the clerk's office, and we were gonna reposition that, but we really can't do that until we have
There's no reason that
The old library is, is situated in this part.
So, so although we'll be moved into the courthouse, there will still be a little part that'll need to be done that'll follow everything else, is that correct?
Exactly. So we're trying to do the sequencing so that the courthouse is of number one priority to get the majority of the Christian body over in there. Um, and then, and and then having the, the, the criminal justice center going at the same time. But then, at that same time as well, we need to be looking at getting it so that
When the criminal, just, uh, Jan, I mean, of this building, David Bryant's, uh, district clerk's office will have to move over there before they start the library. And, uh, but like I said, the library, to move that clerk's office, we don't want to move it for
Well, I thought they might operate on the courthouse lawn for a while.
Might be something different, or else you might enjoy some fresh air.
Anybody else have any questions?
Have you got any signed contract with Taylor yet?
No, I'm, I actually asked them one of them two weeks ago to please get me their, their own construction contract. At least I can can return it, she can start reviewing it. So literally as soon as we're ready to go, we just go, and all the reviewing has been done. So I'll be calling them again today to say, I still haven't seen my contract. So as soon as I can get that from them, um, that's
The original bid, he turned in on the courthouse is still good?
Yeah, he'll, he'll need to do some checking with it, but to be honest, for the most part, the foundation, I don't think is gonna change a whole, whole deal of any. You know, the steel and concrete prices is up and down, up and down, up and down. So I think for most of them, they've been, of recent, the last three months, must have been holding pretty steady. You know, the nine-month, sort of nine-month, twelve-month ago, pricing was, was all overshot with all hauling and losing all of the trucks down to Eagle Ford. You know, we couldn't, the biggest problem was, of course, was hauling and bill. But that seems to stabilize a little bit now, so. I, I think on the courthouse, because it, it's, there's, there's less, it's a less scope of work, and it's less subs. It's nationally stucco, window, you know, painting, unlike the many women parts that we have on the nuclear justice center.
Do you foresee this one coming in, or will we have to rebid it to Justice Center?
I'm, I'm, we're actually, they're, they're reworking on the rebids right now, so we can get our numbers more, more accurate, from where we know exactly where they're gonna be. So there's one, there's, there's, uh, one other decision we'll probably need to look at, depending on some of the feedback I can get from the M E P folks, that we'll need to sit down and talk to about. We've got a, an option for the HVAC system for the new building. We've got a traditional cooling tower arrangement, which is more expensive, we've designed for that as an option. But, um, we've also looked for the individual condenser units, like you see individual units. Obviously, efficiency-wise isn't, isn't for long-term life cycle maintenance, individual units isn't as, as efficient as going with the, the chilling and cooling tower system. But there's a cost associated with that. So depending on some numbers I'm getting in, I'll probably look at maybe, is that next week? Or we can, we need to visit to see which way the county would prefer to go. You know, it's, it's, it's just a, it's, the chilling and cooling tower arrangement is gonna be, you know, twenty, thirty-year deal, whereas the HVAC system going with individual units is gonna be, you know, ten years. So, and there's also costs associated with that. So, again, I think we've got, we have line items and contingencies in certain areas that we may be able to use in those areas, but we just need to make that retroactive. The rest of the stuff I can handle most by myself, but it's not, there's something I think we need to discuss as a score, which we'll you first go.
Hang on. No. You haven't gotten another bid from Taylor since you got them hooked up with the company that you've been trying to get as far as the foundation?
Uh, yes, and that, that number was, we're, we're in budget for the one, the number, the company that I spoke with originally. Um, we, we, we met with the sense in there we're in budget. It's that same company that we originally spoke to, that the, the, uh, geotechnical engineers that they work with and have long experience in the past, so. I don't feel comfortable with that.
Now, now your understanding, uh, the grant, we've proved basically we just need to get the, up there in the net.
The paperwork in and
That was my understanding from what they wrote. Follow away to further detail, there's more grant money available, but there's a lot more hoops to come through for that that probably won't be practical.
No, actually.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Item six, discussion of potential action, discussion of potential actions shall occur regarding the Wilson County Community Plan dated January two thousand fourteen, required by the Criminal Justice Division of the Texas Governor's Office for the purpose of presenting data and obtaining input from the community to identify significant gaps in service and resources for individuals affected by the criminal justice system.
The statement of the agenda item really says what this is. Annually, uh, the county attorney's office coordinates putting this plan together that is submitted to ACOG, who then puts it in a regional format and to the governor's office criminal justice, uh, department. This is really the basis for grant applications, and we've gathered all kinds of data, selected criminal justice issues, put it in here, listed priorities for the county. We had a committee made up of the county attorney, district attorney, a number of nonprofit organizations in the community, a law enforcement, juvenile probation, to help identify three priorities in each category. And then we provided statistical evidence, uh, of our need, and so this will be the basis of grant applications.
Would you touch just a little bit on the committee and the reason that formed as far as the disposition rate, and how important it is for the grants that come from the governor's office on that?
Um, well, let me say there's a, uh, there's a list, uh, let's see, page four and five, list of various people on the planning team. And as you can see, it's a wide variety of people from nonprofit agencies as well as county employees. The first, uh, major priority that we selected was in juvenile services, uh, where we need help with substance abuse, aftercare services, and family preservation. Again, this came from the people that deal with the juvenile justice all the time. Then, uh, we also selected the area victim services, uh, criminal, from criminal, victims of crimes, that we felt like were needed, and including special investigative staff, and, uh, a more coordinated response to family violence, dealing with the family as a whole, and not just with, with a victim or the offender. And then, um, uh, finally, in the law enforcement area, we've identified several things, including a, a family violence investigator that would be specially trained in that area. And then, uh, additional equipment, several of our law enforcement people talked us about, uh, equipment that they needed. And then, um, thirdly, uh, some funds for training for the active shooter response, which we're hearing, we hear so much in the news about shooters at schools and shopping centers and businesses. We also did include, uh, in most of the sections, the information about, um, disposition of cases by the county attorney's office for assault, family violence, um, the number of cases that were reviewed, were reviewed each year, and the number of cases that were filed, and the number of cases, we listed each disposition, uh, different kinds of dispositions. And, uh, of course, I think the numbers look good.
Well, what I, what I'm making reference to, Ms. Eva sits on committee, David Bryant, and he does, he's in all of that, I think somewhere around that, in the, right around ninety percent in it, that's even what
Yes.
percentage, that if we fail to obtain that, we're in compliance with it. But if we fail to obtain that, then we fall out of any, uh, consideration for grants from the governor's office and the criminal justice facility. And that's, uh, that, all the entities have been working hard to keep it that way. And I just wanted to make reference that it's, it's, uh, there, there are a few counties in the, uh, ACOG area that are having difficulty meeting that. So it's, it's a very, very, uh, important thing on that.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, uh, motion to accept the criminal justice community plan, Mr. Lada, Richard Ralston, favor. Item seven, discussion of potential action shall occur regarding the interlocal cooperation agreement between County Information Resources Agency and Wilson County for the purpose of Sarah's provision of assistance and services in all matters relating to information, resources, and technologies in order to make efficiency and improve the quality, reliability, and interoperability of their information, resources, technologies, and services. The agreement provides for Sarah to provide email service and host Wilson County website, but not maintain and update it on a regular basis.
You may remember in November, uh, we had this agreement before us, that's when I first started, and I reviewed it and tabled it, and I asked them to make some changes, and believe it or not, they mailed. So this is, uh, this is the clean-cut agreement, so we're ready to go, and John and Don would be happy.
Okay. John, that's all in favor.
Aye.
This is number six, Judge. We're looking at self-assembly. The judge is having a unitizing conference. I guess in the county, they tap down the conference. And then we could get back to the audit, but it's still Is this the name, did you, just do this?
There's just one place that we need
This one?
Yes. Those are the ones we're about to, for Don and John to look at.
Okay. Item eight, thank you very much. Item eight, discussion, take action on resolution to support the historic courthouse preservation program round eight grant application. Resolution to afford the Texas Historic Courthouse Preservation Program round eight grant application, whereas the Wilson County courthouse is not currently a functional facility, and whereas the county courthouse, Wilson County courthouse is a national register of historic places, is recorded as a Texas historic landmark and state antiquity landmark, and whereas the original building constructed utilized assault brick, poor foundation design, the condition of the brick led to stucco being applied to the walls to prevent further brick deterioration in nineteen thirty-six. Drive conditions coupled with inadequate site advantage and poor foundation design have led to excessive movement of the building, resulting in significant cracking and to the building envelope. And whereas the county, the courthouse is obviously a significant landmark in Florisdale, and is certainly representative of the county's history. Whereas due to the small legislative approch, appropriation during, during the eighty-third legislative session, funds for the, for this THCPP round eight grant cycle are limited. The call focuses on small projects that resolve critical and urgent needs, and therefore be resolved, as Wilson County strongly supports the Texas Historical Courthouse Preservation Program round eight grant application fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Motion, Mr. Earl. File for Mr. Gomis, all in favor.
Aye.
Item
Number one, there's kind of a need to do, Judge. It'll be moved to March the tenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're not gonna do item nine, but are we on, are we on course to get that done like that?
On March the tenth. We spoke with them last week, on regular auditing.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item ten, Dan Harrell, county treasurer, approval and application for resolution for participation in the Texas courthouse with liquid assets security and system program, Texas class.
Okay, as y'all all know, on February the twentieth, we are going to be receiving eight point five million dollars, um, to, for us to proceed with the work done on the courthouse and the Justice Center, the library, everything else. Well, we need to put this money someplace. And, um, we need to keep it liquid because of the fact that, you know, we don't know when we're gonna need the money. We don't want to buy any check thing long term. Plus, we really need to keep our funds diversified. You know, we have money in first, we have to go to any type of school. So I think we need to put this money in, uh, Texas class. And the gentleman from Texas class is here to, uh, tell us, he came to see me last week, who said, actually, they are actually paying a little bit more than, uh, Texas pool interest-wise. And so we really have to have these accounts set up by February the twentieth, because we have to have a place to direct the people that are gonna be sending us this money. And so that's why I'm working on getting this all done before the twentieth, so that all be set in place where we can have this money come in. And then y'all will tell me, or the architect will direct me on when we are going to need to be paying out funds for, you know, it looks like it might not start happening until April, but we might have to start in March. So, um, we have to do a resolution, and the judge and Eva have to sign some paperwork. So I'd like permission to go ahead with this. If you have any questions from Bill, he'll be glad to answer your questions.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I don't know anything about Texas.
Okay, well.
That's why it's secure for us to do that.
Well, I'll, I'll, thank you very much for having me. I was asked you to come here with your fire treasurer and auditor. Uh, hopefully, I'll keep this short and just stay to the end part. Texas Class and Public Trust Advisors, uh, has over twenty years of experience in specializing in fixed income asset management only for public entities. Uh, we've got over, over nine billion in assets under management. We're in managing investment pool in Colorado, Texas, Michigan, uh, New York, Ohio, New Mexico, Florida.
Y'all didn't have anything to do with Michigan, did you?
No. We just Currently, we have three billion in, uh, the Texas Class investment pool. The three main important things to remember are safety, liquidity, and yield. Uh, Texas Class is rated triple-A M from standards and boards, which is the highest rating that you can have. We are fully compliant with Texas Public Funds Act. Uh, the assets in Texas Class are fully collateralized, and the investment holdings are held by a third-party entity that is Wells Fargo Bank. Uh, we have two full-time credit analysis people that, all they do is check the credit quality of the investments that we purchase. Just because it has a rating by one of the rating agencies, they go a little bit more, yeah, into that. Uh, we also have two full-time portfolio managers. We also have two full-time portfolio managers. For liquidity, you have daily liquidity. She will, you'll have access to your funds on a daily basis, any business day. Web access for all transactions and account statements. She can go over account statements anytime that she wants. We also believe in full transparency. If you need to see exactly what the portfolio holdings are on any particular day, she will have access to that. Also, if you have any questions or concerns, you can always pick up the phone call and speak to one of our portfolio managers. There's no minimum balance, and there's no limit on accounts. We do offer competitive returns due to a more balanced portfolio approach rather than an either-or that we had seen similar investment pools, whether strictly government investment pools or strictly commercial paper investment pools. We have much more of a blend of using the best of both. So if the market goes south or softens up for one sector, we're not affected as much. We're the only investment pool that calculates and pays interest daily. So you're actually earning interest on your interest. Some of the reasons, obviously, you know what's going on in the Eagle Ford Shale area. Things are not the same as they were four years, five years ago. What is happening is banks do not want your funds anymore. In the past, they wanted your funds. Now, it costs them more to have that liquidity for the public entities. So they're shying away from that. We've got over five hundred participants in Texas Class currently. Your neighbors around here are all in the same situation as you are. B County approved us December. Karnes approved us last week. We've got Live Oak, LaSalle, and Kenny County that's been all approved us. Or I'm, I'm actually going to meet next month. We've got Escotia, Freo, and McMullen. LaSalle has got a road and bridge grant of over a hundred million dollars that their banks already told them. We can't absorb that. So there is a need from your neighbors, the same as yourself, that they have to have another investment option. I'm not here to replace anything that you're currently doing with your bank or the other investment pool. This is just another investment option that you have. You do have bond money coming. There is a need to have a place to put that, those funds when they arrive on the twentieth. Are there any questions?
Oh, both of y'all will flash by with that.
Yes, Tom and I talked to Rob Henderson, right, last week about this. And he said we are not supposed to be mingling this eight point five million that we get with the general fund money because we're going to have to be doing reports on this money. And it's much easier if you keep it separate. And so that's why, okay, you have any questions?
No, well, Bill, I have a question because I know my law, we have to have the money collateralized. Would Wells Fargo underwrite the collateralization of this? Would y'all underwrite it, or?
What happens is, because this is an investment pool, it's like a money market mutual fund. So we handle the investments for Vigo ISD, Karnes ISDs, all the places around Harris County we deal with. All that money is pooled together. What it is, is they actually purchased investment securities, and then they are held at a third party, just like how your bank deposits are. They collateralize them fully, and then it's held in a third party. So on a safety thing, though, we do not hold anything, but all, all of your assets are collateralized for you and held by a third party.
Is there any vulnerability based upon the stock market performance?
No, sir. This, this fund is a, structured as a two A seven, or money market fund, where it has a dollar net asset, asset value. So unlike if you buy stocks where depending on the market, you're going to be either in the money or out of the money on any particular day. The main goal of this investment pool is obviously safety, a principle. So we try to maintain a dollar net asset value, so that you're running this, this liquid.
Did Henderson okay this? Oh, we did not speak with Henderson.
Just about diversifying of the funds.
Diversifying of the funds, we talked to him. Can I just ask him?
Sure.
Okay. Because he knows all the bond conditions and, okay.
It's a good prompt.
Right. Just double check what you know. Okay. All right, we can do that. Although we talked to him last week, and he told us about keeping it, you know, liquid, and, you know, that we weren't supposed to mix it with our general fund money and.
She needed to have this set up by the twentieth, yes.
Yes, sir. That money has to come to a place. Right now, I'm working with the Bank of Stock Trust down here. We're setting up two accounts, the working account and the interest and sinking account on Wilson County Construction. So, and we're working on those two bank accounts now. Send the minutes, he gave me a copy of the minutes, I send him, and we're working on setting up those bank accounts because.
Oh, can we table this till the end of the meeting? You go ahead and call him.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's the judge from here. Go on, man.
Do you want to go ahead and call me the judge?
Yes, please. Item eleven, the annual GM C. Item eight, temporary water line division permit approval on month thirteen, two thousand fourteen, item seventeen, B two, HomeStar Operating LLC, Precinct two, two oh five.
That is information purposes only.
Probably change permit on the presentation. That's a recent document. Item B, pipeline crossing permit. First three is, that's, is an item, is in, well, all but one of them is precinct two.
They're all in precinct two except for permanent number seven, zero, seventy.
On those other six, with exception of four, you review all those calls? You'll take them all at one time then? Your, your recommendation?
As long as they got their, all the papers, yeah, that's a big quarter.
Yes, yeah.
Motion, call, file, and the second, item Gomis, all approved. And on the item four, Commissioner Gomis, motion, Commissioner Gomis, act, file.
Oh, you already do?
No.
What you doing, sir?
No, no, wait for you to come in.
Okay, now we're going, that's right.
That the judge on you?
It's just a two.
We've covered all nine of them here.
Good, thank you.
Item C, non-standard flat variance, one Virginia Lane, nineteen twelve. Comrade, in the gene of vote, discuss and take action.
Okay, this variance request came before the committee last week. It is given a favorable recommendation. They own a lot in Bitwood. And they own a large tract that joins this lot. And they want to sell that tract, that the tract does not have load or drainage. So they were requesting the variance to be able to build, to divide up their, their lot into three tracts and to build a road to county specs like the rest of Bitwood subdivision is, so that they would be able to provide access to the track that's not in the subdivision. And it was given a favorable recommendation.
It's an extension of Virginia, right?
No, it's not an extension. It's going to tee into it, it's going to have a different name.
And is it going to be a county road?
They, they, they plan to dedicate it to the county, so they're going to do a construction bond, they're going to do the road plans in specs just like a developer would. They're going to meet all of those requirements. They just want to be able to build it to the same specs as Bitwood. And back then, it was a sixty-foot roadway instead of seven.
So they run built to the specs.
To the specs of Bitwood, of the roads in, in Bitwood at the time they were built.
Motion, Commissioner file, and Commissioner Lada, all in favor? Item D, discussion of potential action shall occur regarding the request of the developer, other Woodlands subdivision, the Oaks subdivision LLC, to substitute a good sufficient construction security bond, meeting all of the specifications in section D of the subdivision and development rules and regulations, entitled construction bond. For the letter of credit provided April fourth, two thousand thirteen, when the subdivision flat was officially approved, two thousand thirteen, when by the commissioners' court, apparently positive recommendation of the county development review committee, the construction bond will be for the same amount of money in the same time period as the letter of credit. The Woodlands subdivision is located in precinct four.
What they, they came to the committee to ask for a favorable recommendation. When they did the development, they did a letter of credit. And the letter of credit is for two years. And they have built the roads. What they would like to do is to change from a letter of credit to a construction bond for the same amount as the initial letter of credit, which is over eight hundred something thousand. And it would remain in effect for the remainder of the two years.
Does that cost them less money, or what?
I'd say it brings up cash for the, for the bond, that kind of, you know, a percentage. Whereas with the letter of credit, it has a big chunk of their money. At least that's, that's what he said.
And so the, the bond would be for the same amount, not a lesser amount to the people, the same amount.
Not being, two questions. One, in your opinion, does that meet all the requirements of our, our new subdivision regulations?
Well, we don't.
That's question one. Question two is, are we setting, if, if this all works, it's fine. Are we setting a precedent that we really don't want to set? And I know you talked about it when we were in class.
Setting a precedent possibility that, that we don't want to set, I'm not sure.
We're going to be covered either way, and that's the key thing.
Right. And, and we are not going to release that letter of credit until we have a construction bond in hand. So that's going to take place at the same commissioners' court. And the, of course, the construction bond, they're going to have to provide a draft so the county attorney's office can review the language and make sure it covers us in that aspect of it.
But if we have damage to the road, something, significant damage, we're covered either way? In your opinion, the opinion of?
Possible, because the bond might be in those.
I think so. Our preference is usually the bond. Well, and, and developers haven't done an actual bond in quite some time. They should do letters of credit. I'm told there are fewer, less people that, because they only have two.
Motion, Commissioner Lada, and Commissioner Ralston, all in favor? Did you get a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go back down to item ten. All of us going to contact Bob Henderson, our financial advisor, and ask, saying, what is, what is, all of Texas class?
He said to go ahead and, and do the paperwork to set up the accounts. And on the twentieth, when we receive the money, that he's either going to come meet with us to let us know about where to put all the money. He said it's okay to set up the account.
Is that satisfactory to you?
Yeah, great.
Motion, Commissioner Wiley, and Commissioner file, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
This is a technical word, Judge, there's a resolution that has to be resolved. Will you read it? Okay. Test me in nature. Test me.
You better get it right.
Resolution to participate. Whereas the Public Funds Investment Act, Texas Government Code, section two two five six point zero zero one, E T S E Q, the act requires the governing body of each local government in this state to adopt investment policies in accordance with the term of the act. And whereas pursuant to the requirements of the act, the board of trustees, the governing body of the Wilson County, the local government, as previously reviewed and adopted, involve investment policy that provides in part that the funds of the local government will be invested in investments permitted by the act in order to invest only in investments that will be permitted under Texas law. Metimize risk by managing portfolio investments so as to preserve principal and maintain the stable asset value. Manage portfolio investments to ensure that cash will be available as required to finance operations and maximize current income to the degree consistent with legality, safety, and liquidity. And whereas pursuant to the policy and the act, the local government has appointed Jan Hartle, the investment officer, to act as the investment officer of the local government. And whereas the act provides that funds under the control of local government may be invested through investment pools meeting the standards of section two two five six point zero one six of the act. And whereas the local government has received and reviewed the information statement dated October first, two thousand and thirteen, the information statement of Texas Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems and Investment Pool administered by Public Trust Advisors LLC, the program, which sets forth the information required by section two two five six point zero one sixty of the act. And whereas the local government has determined that the investments proposed to be acquired by the program are of the type that are permitted by the act and are consistent with the policy. And whereas the local government has determined that an investment in the program will assist the local government in achieving the goals set forth in the policy and will tend to preclude imprudent investment activities arising out of investment transactions conducted between the local government and the program. And whereas the local government understates that the program operates through the Sixth Amendment and Restated Trust Agreement dated as of Oc- October. Amendment and Restated Trust Agreement dated as of Aug- August sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, the trust agreement, which provides the terms on which the program will operate and the rights of the participants in the program and sets forth the responsibilities of Public Trust Advisors LLC as the administrator of the program, the administrator, and of Wells Fargo Bank as custodian, the custodian. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of...
Before you, before you go on that, back to about three paragraphs, what is your August, uh, thirteen?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
What, what does that mean? What, read, read that again, huh?
Whereas the local government understands that the program operates through the Sixth Amendment and Restated Trust Agreement dated as of October sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the local government. That the form, terms, and provision of the trust agreement, a draft of which was presented and reviewed at this meeting providing the creation of the program and for the rights of the program participants and the duties and responsibilities of the administrator be the same and hereby approved and adopted and that the investment officer be, and he or she is hereby authorized to direct it, to execute and deliver to the administrator and the custodian in the name, and on behalf of the local government, a participation certificate evidencing the agreement of the local government, to be bound by the, by the trust agreement substantially in the form of trust agreement reviewed and approved at this meeting together with such changes therein as may be approved by the said officer, such approval to be conclusively evidenced by the execution thereof and be it further resolved that the investment program established by the trust agreement is hereby found and determined to be consistent with the policy and to preclude imprudent investment activities arising out of investment transactions conducted between the local government and the program and be it further resolved that the governing body hereby officially finds and determines that the facts and re- citations contained in the preamble of this resolution are true and correct and be it further resolved that the governing body hereby finds and declares a written notice of the date, hour, place, and subject of the meeting at which this resolution was adopted was posted for the time required by law preceding this move...